I'll call the meeting to work. We'll let him fix the technical issue. While we're working on that, we'll have our prayer and the pledge. Kendra and Kelly are going to assist us.
Your heavenly Father, we thank you for the honor and ability to be involved in the work of the county and its citizens. Please grant wisdom to our community leaders and humble desire to govern with the needs of our citizens as a priority. Fill us with your grace and let us never forget that all we do should glorify you. Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, in the kingdom of justice for all.
Thank you. First thing is, we have the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Read the proof.
And the additional agenda, thank you, keep me straight. And the addition of the adoption of the agenda and the additional agenda is at your desk. Do I have a motion to adopt both?
You did.
I have a second. Do you have further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. unanimous. Next, we have the adoption of the minutes of our previous meeting, which was September the 10th, 2019, as presented.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. unanimous. And we will slide to Mr. Carter and our financial report.
Chairman, members of the board, you should have a packet in front of you. Begins with a revenue summary report. Begins on page two. As I continually identify, we'll start with Fund One. The far left corner, of course, is the adopted number. The next column is basically the same, there have been no adjustments to that thus far in the fiscal year. The current amount, as of 10/08, for revenues is $2,895,084.44. Your year-to-date amount that you've collected, $4,974,320.8. That leaves you with a balance of $20,808,183.92, with an uncollected amount of about 80%, which is pretty much on track for this point in the year. The remaining funds, two, three, and they continue all the way back to page six, are the other funds that have been created over the years for the county. Again, if you go to the bottom of page six, under the budget amount, you'll see an adopted number of $89,532.32. If you remember sometime, month or two ago, we made an amendment to that, which changed that number to $89,722.289. Your current amount that you have received for all funds in revenue for this month is And your year-to-date amount thus far for all funds in revenue is $17,183,123.35. That leaves you with a balance to collect over the remaining months of $72,539,165.65, or about 80% left to collect, which is, again, pretty close on where we are thus far in the year. Now, your pages that follow is the expenditure summaries that go along with the revenues. Again, page one of that report is the Fund One report. And if you look down through those numbers of columns, you'll see all of the expenditures and departments that relate accordingly. The final number for Fund One is actually on top of page two. It does not, the spacing does not allow it to occur on page one, so you have to look at the top number on page two, where it says Comprehensive Service Act. After that, you will see a fund total. Again, if you look at the budget amount in Fund One, we plugged in $25,888,786, both in the budget, and the current, that fund also has not received any amendment thus far. The current amount expenditures for Fund One, $2,944,105.71. And your year-to-date total expenditures in Fund One, $6,115,199.03. Leaves you with an unencumbered amount of $19,773,586.97, or roughly about 76% remaining. So revenues and expenditures are running as anticipated. Again, following the remainder of pages two, three, four, and five, those are the offsets to the revenues that were provided in the previous report. Those are the different funds that actually have the expenditures coming out of them. On page five, you will notice, basically, the only line on that page is the original adopted amount of $89,532.432. The corrected amount with the amendment was $89,722.289. You have a current amount of expenditures in all funds of $7,982,905.12, with a year-to-date amount in all funds of $16,468,739.39. This leaves an unencumbered balance of $73,253,549.61, or again, right at that 81%. So those numbers are all tracking accordingly. As a comparison, year-to-date numbers, your revenues currently exceed your expenditures by $714,383.96, based on those two reports.
All right, thank you. Go right ahead.
I'm sorry.
Slow me down if I get too fast.
I can stop.
You're good. I'll start with that.
But the next page is a department summary. And if you look down those lines on the left, you'll see the departments that fall within the county budget. The first column is a snapshot of October of 19. The next column is a snapshot of October of 18. The last column is a difference. And without going through each individual item, if you go to the bottom, for this October of 19, of all those departments, we have a total expenditure of $1,588,809.52. A year ago, in October of 18, we had $1,928,818.77. So in those comparisons of those two snapshots in 19, we are $340,009.25 less in expenditures for those departments. The next page is a reoccurring history, basically going all the way back to 12/13, all the way to 19/20. Historically, I compare last to this. If you look at the last two on the right, 18/19, this time, a year ago, we had an overage in revenues over expenditures or deposit expenditures of $1,643,426.65. And in the current year, our deposits over expenditures are $2,545,745.53. So there's a $902,318.88 difference in those two numbers respectively. Let's return the page to the next section. These are the numbers that are provided by the Treasurer's Office each year. We have on the left, a snapshot of 2018. On the right, we have a snapshot of this 2019. So very quickly, I'll begin with the first bold number, which is a combination of bank balance and CD investments. In 18, at this time, we had $6,736,137.81. And in 19, we have $8,550.59.31, which is an increase of $1,813,921.50. Our deposits in September of 18 was $6,207,170.61. Our deposits in September of 19, $6,294,139.38, for an increase of $86,968.77. Our expenses in 2018, $6,587,344.23. Expenses in September of 19, $6,494,745.39. So it's a decrease in 19 of $92,598.84. Brings you to your subtotal in 18, the subtotal, $6,355,964.19. Subtotal in 19, $8,349,453.30. So it's an increase in the subtotal of $1,993,489.11. We then get to the unspent appropriations, which we'll detail on the next page. But in 18, we had a total unspent of $588,264.95. And in 19, we have an unspent of $778,855.03. I will remind the board that at the meeting, you did appropriate nearly $100,000 of money for the Sheriff's Department cars, and we're carrying included with that carryover. Brings us to the balance, that's the number we need to get to, to see how we proceed with appropriations. In 9/30 of 18, for the subtotal, when you're taking the unspent appropriations off, you had a balance of $5,787,699.24. In 19, again, with your subtotal and your unspent taken off, you have a balance of $7, 575,9827, so you're $1,802,899.03, ahead of where you were last year on your available balance. The rest of the numbers on that sheet correspond to various CDs. It does identify the Police Activity Fund. If you flip the page, we'll go very quickly. I mentioned the unspent appropriations, just to give an idea. On the next page, Social Services in 2018 had an unspent amount of $93,819.79. In 19, they have an unspent amount of $90,666.15. So they're $3,153.64 less in their unspent. Capital School in Adelaide, their unspent in 18 was $461,799.72. In 19, it's $551,463, so they're actually up $89,663.28. Finally, the county in 18, $32,645.44. In 19, $136,725.88. But again, that includes the carryover funds for the purchase of the Sheriff's Department cars. If you flip to the next page, the Treasurer's Office keeps an accurate tracking of the balances that are provided each month for the water and sewer, as well as the taxes. And very quickly, in 2018, we'll go straight to deposits for the Water Department. There was $133,610.95 in deposits. In 19, we received $202,981.47 in deposits. So we actually increased that number by $69,375.2. Our expenses in 18 was $559,192.56. In 19, they were $567,542.40. So we were actually over in expenditures by $8,349.84. That brings you to your balance. Your balance in 18 was $2,702,329.97. In 19, it was $2,547,259.22. So we have reduced that overall balance by $155,070.75. That translates on down to the column that says Total Loss, 03 present, same numbers. Very quickly, the taxes, $98.97. There was $13 million, these are uncollected, $13,102,783. Uncollected in 19 to 18, which is a year difference, as you all well know, $13,115,624.46. So it's an increase of $12,841.46. Your PPTRA actually changed a little bit from 18, it was $8,943.713.16. And in 19, it was $8,989,301.86. So there's an increase in PPTRA by $45,588.70. Your uncollected, 18's $4,159,069.84. Uncollected in 19, $4,126,322.60. So it's less by $32,747.24. And finally, the uncollected county taxes in 18 at this point, $17,376,043.36. In 19, same time frame, $17,719,886.16. There is an increase of $343,842.80. Once again, the PPTRA was slightly different. 18, $8,229,498.0. 19, $1,839,315.3. So there's a $7,009.8173 plus on that. And finally, uncollected, after all that, uncollected 18, $15,553,093.56. Uncollected August of 19, $15,888,954.63, which is an increase of $335,861.07. After all that, the final report that you have is the Treasurer's Accountability Report, that again, is provided by the Treasurer's Office, that identifies the previous balance, the debit credit, and the ending balance of each of those respective accounts. I would encourage you to look over those, if you have any questions about those. You can certainly provide those to me, or for the Treasurer's Office, if you want, I'd be happy to forward those on accordingly. When you do get to the point on your agenda today to consider your appropriations, you do have the necessary funds available to consider all your appropriations.
Thank you. That was excellent. I guess we're to citizens' time, so I'll open up citizens' time. If you have anyone signed up wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman, in case there are no one signed up.
We had no one sign up. Is there anyone here wishing to speak during citizens' time? All right, hearing none, I'll close citizens' time. If you'll refer to your additional agenda, we'll do this while we're squeezing a few before our 5:30 time. Request for approval for appropriations, we have General County Accounts Payable Listing, Payroll, $718,546.73. Auto-Draft Rural Development, $8,974. AEP Century Link Bills, $25,000. County Administration Fund, $5,000. For a total county appropriation plus carryover of $2,330,000.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Thank you. We have Social Services for October 9th through October 31st, 2019, $350,000. From November 1st to November 12th, 2019, $60,000. For a total Social Services appropriation of $410,000.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. We have School Operating Funds, Instructional, $3 million. Administration Attendance and Health, $135,000. Transportation, $200,000. Facilities, $300,000. School Food Service, $335,000. Technology, $140,000. For a total School Operating Fund of $4,110,000.
So move.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Thank you. School Debt Service, $210,000.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? Please raise your right hand. EDA Fund Four, $15,000.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor? Sheriff's Fund Seven Forty Eight, $1,268.68.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. And Recovery Court Fund Seven Forty Nine, $515.33.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Would you like to do the dry weather drought letter prior to 5:30, or a story?
Sir, members of the board, if you return to page 11 of your additional agenda, you will see a letter that was provided by Andy Overbay. And if it's appropriate, I would like to read that letter for the record, if you provide discussion. It says, "Friends, as you are aware, we've experienced several weeks of practically no rain, which has led to seriously dry conditions. Most of the pasture in the area is completely gone, and in fact, has been overgrazed due to the lack of regrowth. Under normal weather conditions, most livestock producers would still be grazing at this time of year. However, many farmers have been forced to feed, start feeding hay to their livestock eight to 10 weeks earlier than normal due to the fact that pastures are gone. Adding to the problem is the abnormally wet season we experienced up to the point where the skies dried up. The excessive rain we had diluted the nutritional value of the hay we do have on hand, so most of our producers will either have to feed additional purchased feed, or run the risk of selling underweight calves. Many of these producers will now have to buy hay or grain to make it through the winter. Even if rain returns, we have missed at least 45 to 60 days of growth in our cool-season grass crop, which is most of the native forages. For this reason, and those above, I am sending you this letter on behalf of the county's livestock producers. I would suggest contacting the local Farm Service Agency, County Committee, asking them to implement actions that would open USDA relief programs. This will help the local FSA office frame a reason to respond in light of the fact that at least on paper, our area is not in a drought situation based on rainfall for the year. We need to voice the concern that while, yes, we did have rains earlier, plant available water is a true measure of our pasture's conditions." And he identifies the local FSA contact as Mr. Ronald B. Hail, County Executive Director of Washington Smith County Farm Service Agency out of Addington, Virginia. Mr. Chairman, I would ask for consideration by the board to allow for some type of official letter or notice to be sent on behalf of this request from the Smith County Board Supervisor requesting.
All right.
I'll make a motion to that, please.
All right, we have a motion to...
Second.
...by that communication. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. unanimous. Thank you. Well, if it'll be all right, I guess we could do our 5:30 CSA presentation. Ms. Kendra Haynes?
I brought guests coming with me today. I thought I'd do all kind of an overview of CSA rather than just me. The DSS is involved in a lot of parts of what we do, so Helen's gonna do CPS, Karen's gonna do foster care, and then I'll do everything at the end.
I'm not to keep you too long, even though I could talk for hours about this. Been at this for 30 years, so I have quite the fun as a CPR. But I am Helen Holman, I'm the Child Protective Service Supervisor. Included in my unit are two investigators, and I have just hired a new person, and we still have one open position. I have a senior worker, two ongoing workers, an FPM facilitator, and a caretaker. My unit investigates the abuse and neglect of children, and provides services to help alleviate and prevent further abuse and neglect of the children. Most prevalent in this area is the abuse neglect that's occurring in conjunction with the caretaker using abusive drugs and alcohol. And the drugs are both illegal and prescription drugs. In our high-risk cases, we do divert children, and we do that by, with a parent's agreement, by sending them to relatives or friends. We also use protective orders, and as a last resort, sometimes we have roommate children. With high-risk cases, we have what's called family partnership meetings, which brings the family, the worker, and any service providers that are working with them at that time, brings them all to the table. Family partnership meetings or FPMs are strength-based, where the focus on the strengths of the family is the most important thing. During FPMs, it's determined which, if any, service is needed, or what additional service may be needed by the family, to keep the family unit intact, or to reunite the family. From there, the worker with the help, with help from the family, fill out all the necessary paperwork, and like everything else, there's plenty of that, and the case is staffed at fact to request money for the services needed. And that's where Kendra comes in. The most utilized service for CPS is lifelong services. That provides an in-home counseling, substance abuse assessments, and follow-up treatment, and some parenting. This particular service goes into the home to meet the needs, goes actually into the home of the parents, because most times, these parents don't have transportation. This particular service goes in and provides all the stuff that a parent would have to go out into the community to get. So it's a very important service for us. We do utilize other services when we can, such as Mount Rogers Mental Health, Heatherwood Counseling, and other counseling services that are in the area. I think anyone that's came to the area is a ROD, which I'm really promoting upstairs, because that's really geared for substance abuse users. We have quite a bit of substance use and abuse in our county. We find it, we see it more often probably than anyone other than law enforcement. It's everywhere. I receive anywhere between 30 and 45 new cases a month. And of those, probably 85 to 90% include some type of drug use. Mainly methamphetamines, that's our biggie, marijuana, and of course, alcohol is always thrown in there. This, you can just imagine how this affects the children. You can just imagine what we try to do to put out the fires, to keep these children in their family when possible. And with that, we always need funds to try to get the services put in place for them. Now, I'll turn to Karen, because when I bring them into foster care, I'm not her.
My name's Karen Loughlin, I'm a foster caregiver. I've been working in foster care for about 14 years. I've been a supervisor for about a year now. So once the daycare unit makes that's made for the decision to bring a child into foster care, our job is to get them back home to their parents and to... our job is to get them back home to their birth parents and to help them whenever possible. Getting them home to their birth parents is our primary goal. And we have about a year to fifteen months to do that, and that's a staple. During that time, we are also looking at relatives, um, to speaking with them, to take the children, so they don't have to be fostered here. If after a year to fifteen months, the family has not made enough progress or addresses safety factors and feels so much pain for them to go home, then we have to file a petition for CPR, for termination of parental rights, and that is an adoption of home. Which is a last resort, but something we also celebrate, because it's better for them to be adopted than to be in foster care for... When they're in foster care, we do have to offer a number of services to address the safety factors. Usually those safety factors involve substance abuse, domestic violence, mental health issues. And we have a few children in care because of delinquency issues and those children are usually transferred to us through the juvenile court system. Court service unit, it's not, it's technical, we're not able to buy CPS, it's just children who have been... In the court system for a while and have been offered services there and for whatever reason didn't work out, so the judge transfers them to the DSS. Um, we have, currently we have forty-three children in foster care. Thirty-three of those children are in family-based placements. Four of them are in relative placements. Three are in cooperative care, which is group homes or residential facilities. And three of them are four-year to eighteen and they are participating in a new program which started in two thousand sixteen called Foster Futures. And that allows those eighteen-year-olds to, um, go to college, work in housing, all things that need to be helped at this level. And they're allowed to participate in that program until they're twenty-one. They also get health insurance until they're twenty-one, so that's a big benefit for them. Uh, while they're in foster care, we make several service referrals, for substance abuse treatments, parenting assessments, genetic guidance and counseling, um, child counseling for child and parents, mental health services, which are usually covered through Medicaid. We also help with housing and employment assistance and transportation. We do a lot of transporting for families and kids. We also continue, um, holding family partnership meetings, so that the families can be involved in the decision-making. Um, we always prefer to make a farm case training and that's been pretty successful. I think they've been pretty comfortable with going to the table and discussing their concerns. We hold those at every critical point in a case, so we hold them before every court hearing. We hold them during, um, before placement changes, um, before a transition from foster care back into the home because we want everybody to be on board with how that's been worked and how that's handled, so. We also hold those meetings before a goal change and changes to invitational. So the family is really invited to be involved in all those decisions. Currently, we have eighteen foster homes, which are in the second, we really want to increase that number. Cause another part of our responsibility is to recruit foster parents and approve those homes and monitor them, watch them in a place there. Um, we have six of those being approved and the foster parents have to go through a pretty... And since a approval process, it takes about three months, so. CSA is very important to foster children. If, when they come into care, we, we apply for two different funding streams. One is 4E, which is federal funds, and the other is the local funds to CSA. But even if they qualify for 4E funding, most of the services, both parents are covered to CSA. It helps us a lot. Kendra asked me to give an update on the Families First Prevention Act, which will go into effect tentatively in July, um, first of two thousand twenty. And that is aimed at getting more 4E funding, federal funding, to prevent the children from coming into foster care. Um, so the goal of that is to decrease the number of children in foster care and provide services to the family through 4E funding, so that not to use so much local funding. And we hope that will be successful. It was initially planned of, um, to go into effect our job first of this year, but Virginia is currently trying to approve more services because the services that, uh, this, um, covers has to meet certain state practices. And we don't have enough of those in the state right now, so they're trying to approve more service providers that have any of our criteria that Medicaid will cover. 4E funding will cover, so they're hoping to get it started by July next year. That's for adult substance abuse and mental health treatments. And that will also help children in foster care as well. And one of the criteria for Families First is to have a kinship and caregiver program. And we did recently have a grant transfer from one county to the state county. And so now we do have a kinship and caregiver position and it was built on August first. And that first, I will be working with families who already have children in the home, like grandchildren or these nephews, younger brothers and sisters, um, to help those relatives, keep those children in their homes and serve that family unit without bringing them to foster care if they're having certain challenges. So we're, we're excited about that. We hope this is gonna help prevent children from coming into foster care. I think that covers foster care. We are always looking for more foster homes, so.
Claudia, why don't you... So the reason I asked them to come is just because I wanted you all to see that CSA is a large number, uh, has spent a lot of money locally, federally through the state. Um, and I just wanted you all to kind of see, uh, that it's more than just my program that is involved in that. It's through foster care and CPS, kind of the breakdown of how this sort of is work, um, so. I'm just gonna kind of throw some numbers at you now. There we go. Um, so this, all these numbers are based on last year, um, for the state, or the school year ends in September. So these are July first through June thirtieth of eighteen nineteen. The total program cost was one million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. State share of that was all over a million and local share was close to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it's a good bit of money, um, and there's a lot of children involved in that, about a hundred and three. Uh, that's not just foster care, that's prevention and foster care on both sides, so. For a small community, there's a large number of children involved in families. Um, the services that they discuss, I mean, before we get into a little bit, thirty-seven percent of our budget per CSA was spent on 4E for treatment foster care, um, which that's placement for these foster children and pay mostly by the 4E funds. Um, the other part, thirty-one percent, that's our other big one, is residential and that can be for education or for room and board. Sometimes we don't pay for the room and board Medicaid does, but it'll cover the educational costs. Um, thirteen percent is special, special education, which is private day placement. So those are for children who are not alone, held at school or have to be contained, but don't do that in a home, so residential. A big part of our budget is about sixteen percent of community-based services, which is largely prevention for foster care. And then, um, the small ones are foster care basic maintenance payments, which we provide for foster parent. And then non-mandated services, it's barely, it didn't even register as a percent of content. It's just a little bit, okay. Um, those are cases that you see that aren't mandated by the state to be paid, um, at a higher portion by the state. So it's, most of our kids need that mandated criteria. Um, even further, that community-based services is broken down. Seventy-one percent is foster care prevention. A lot of those services are intensive care coordination, which is done through Mount Rogers Community Service Force. They provide, um, intensive treatment to keep these children out of residential. Twelve percent is for foster care maintenance, things like clothing, um, to help foster families. Eleven percent is companion parenting and six percent is for assessment and evaluation. The type of community-based services, um, as more in the other spots are assessment and evaluations. These, this group of services is a large part of our budget. Um, as you can see, some of them are parenting assessments and psychological assessments, substance abuse assessments and trauma assessments, um, counseling of all types, intensive prevention, which I talked about, is that intensive care coordination and family support services and foster care maintenance. And, uh, the alcohol placement are fifty-one percent of the use that is through CSA. So you've got several different categories there. Treatment foster care for 4E and the non-4E, residential women board, residential education and private day placement. Those numbers are actual children that are in those alcohol placements. Uh, and it doesn't seem like a large amount, but for such a small county, that's quite a few number of children there. Contributing factors that they talked about are largely substance abuse issues. And because of those, there's a lot of other needs and, and services that kind of wrap around that. Um, trauma, incarceration, neglect and mental health often are substance abuse issues. Making a difference, I always like to kind of throw in a little something. Uh, community can absolutely make a difference. We have a small community, but just by supporting these individuals who have had issues, who have been incarcerated and have lost their children and are trying to, to get back into society and be functioning members and good parents, you can do all these things just to help. And I kind of thought I'd end it with something cute, funding and coaching, and giving them such a lot of...
So, uh, this weekend, I went to Dallas for a Cowboys game. And, uh, during the game, they showed a shot of George in the last game. People were upset. They thought, why is a gay Hollywood liberal sitting next to a conservative Republican president? Didn't even notice I'm holding a brand new iPhone up. And, uh, I was aware that, I was really surrounded with people with very different views and beliefs. And I'm not talking about politics. I was rooting for the Packers and, uh, get this, everybody in the Cowboys team was rooting for the Cowboys. And so I had to hide my cheek. Here's a thing, I'm friends with George Bush. In fact, I'm friends with a lot of people who don't share the same beliefs that I have. We're all different and I think that we've forgotten that that's okay, that we're all different. Just because I don't agree with someone on everything doesn't mean that I'm not gonna be friends with them. When I say be kind to one another, I don't mean only the people that think the same way that you do. I mean be kind to everyone, too.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say, I'm really impressed with the work that you do. I, I don't know how you do it. You work in some really tough situations. And thank you for what you do.
Thank you. All right. I guess we have some stuff scheduled at six, we'll slide down some new business committee recommendations. And the first one is appointment committee, and that is me. So if you will find those notes in your materials. The appointment committee met on September twenty-fourth. And we had a, a recommendation to appoint Ms. Carol Greer of Seven Fifty-Eight Meadow Drive, Marion, to the Smith County Public Library Board. Uh, this is me to replace Ms. Maxie Smith, who served her term and did an excellent job. Now, there is one mistake of where it says two-year term, it's actually for a four-year term, beginning July first, twenty nineteen, and it would end June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, if, if, those of you that were here remember, uh, when the, the committee was set, there was staggered terms so that everybody wouldn't finish at the same time. Every, there was a one-year, a two-year, a three-year and two four-years. And then as people rotate on, every term is for a four-year term, uh, from that point forward. But again, this was a committee recommendation, a unanimous committee recommendation, uh, to appoint Ms. Greer to the Smith County Public Library Board. Does anyone have any questions? Being that it was a unanimous committee recommendation, uh, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. We're good, thank you. All right. Next is building the grounds, Mr. Chairman, someone, you'd like to go ahead and...
Buildings, yeah. The Buildings Grounds Committee met on September twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen. John Graham, Clerk of Circuit Court, presented a request for the donation of a building from the Commonwealth, located on a campus at Southwest Virginia Mental Health Institute, to be used for a woman's residential treatment facility. The facility will be available for women that have completed a detox program, provide them with services to stay clean and sober. The court, request is for Smith County Board Supervisors to request the building from the Commonwealth, accept the building once the Commonwealth approves and to enter into a three-year budget mutual lease for the building. The building is in need of repairs and a request is being made for the state to rehab before donating to Smith County. Should the program not be successful after three years' lease, the building would once again belong to the Commonwealth. There was some discussion. Everybody agreed unanimously to, uh, ask the state for this as listed.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment?
Yes.
I, I can't see everyone in the audience, so. If I can see you, I can see you, if I cannot, I cannot. But I think you have a group of individuals here also that are behind this, this, uh, project. Certainly not trying to extend, but it may be a good opportunity if anyone there has an additional comment or words of encouragement before consideration by the board. Sure, no one shy back that way.
Mr. Graham, I think they were pointing towards you.
That was only Dr. Carter.
Well, he's my boss, so I gotta go then.
Well, with that invitation, I will simply, I will point out that it is, um, it's not only I am asking for this. Uh, there, I was the, the willing spokesperson for a consortium of folks who, um, have put together, who have a lot of momentum, uh, to address substance abuse in our community. And that includes the sheriff, that includes Julie Carrico, who's the new director of the League Aid Society. It includes Dr. Carter, who of course is a school superintendent. It involves Ruth Ray Cox, who's on the back row of this panel. Um, it also involves the Health Department. It involves Mount Rogers Community Services in various roles, not only with, with Ruth. Um, it also involves probation and parole. Um, the Marion Police Department, the Salt Lake, New Ohio Police Departments have all collaborated with this. Uh, Michael Carter has been, uh, active in, in helping coordinate this. So, um, it is something that comes from a, a group of people who are excited about the possibility.
Thank you. This was a unanimous committee recommendation. Does anyone have any comments, questions or concerns? Right here in that, can I... All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, unanimous. Good luck.
Chairman, may I add one thing?
Yes.
In, in combination with that motion, you also have a resolution of support. I'll put this thirty more years in. I believe it would be... Good. If the consideration of this resolution can be considered at the same time, therefore, uh, if considered and approved, uh, we can begin the process of encouraging, supporting localities and memberships to also stand with Smith County.
All right, is that something, should we read the resolution or... We could pop that up on the screen where everybody can see it.
You all have heard my voice quite a bit, but, uh, I'm... What you need's a motion. I mean, everybody here read it.
Yes.
If you'd like to put it on the screen, but I'm willing to make a motion that we move forward with the resolution, approve the resolution, have it submitted.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
We have two seconds. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
All right, yes, if y'all wanna read it, it's a... You ready for the second part?
All right. Yes, all right.
Michael Carter, County Master Mayor, presented an update to the committee concerning the Morrison Building. Mr. Carter stated that he has spoken to representatives from the Commonwealth concerning the conveyance of the building, and the transaction should be complete by the end of two thousand nineteen. Mr. Carter also stated the RFP for the Bollas System needed for the Morrison Building will go out for advertisement in the next few weeks and should be considered at the Board of Supervisors meeting in November.
All right. I believe that's all we have. Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. I guess we're just continuing with our budget committee recommendations. If you turn to your items, Budget Committee met September the twenty-fourth, uh, had several, several topics of discussion. Uh, first, we had, uh, Mr. Tom Burkett gave a an update presentation, uh, to the committee concerning Sheridan Ridge, uh, which is currently under liquid taxes for the years twenty sixteen and twenty nineteen. Uh, the committee, along with Mr. Burkett and others in attendance, continued to discuss the issue and thoughts on how to handle the situation. So that was just an update. Then we had, uh, Mr. Michael Carter presented some bids. Uh, we had one bid recommendation for approval, uh, to award the bid for a forty-yard receiver container, and your information is in your package. Uh, this is one forty-yard receiver container in the amount of six thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars, and to award that bid to Baker's Waste Equipment. And that was a unanimous committee recommendation. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Uh, we also, Ms. Carter presented, uh, bids for two pickup trucks. We had one pickup truck for the water sewer department, or one for the water sewer and one for animal control. Uh, the bid for, uh, recommendation was to award the first bid to Worldwide Ford for the purchase of one extended cab pickup in the amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars. And this pickup truck would be the one to be utilized by the Animal Control Department. Uh, this was a unanimous committee recommendation. Any further discussion?
I do.
Yes.
I have, Mr. Chairman, um, and looking at the two bids, where we had two vehicles, one is a, uh, Smith County business and one's out of the county. And I just, did we give any consideration to the fact that there's very little difference in the bids and and want to try to do business within the county if possible?
Uh, the the first one, the extended cab was was the local business.
Right.
So the only question at the moment is, is for the local. The the next one is down the road with a couple of updates.
I just think we need to really consider buying them both in Smith County with the small difference in the total bid. I didn't bring a lot of numbers while I worked it up, but seems like it's a hundred and twenty-two dollars difference or something like that.
It's, uh, it's a sixty-five dollars difference on the extended cab. The local business is lower, and on the regular cab, it was a hundred and eighty-six dollars difference with the lower bid being...
So we'd spend a hundred and twenty-two more if we gave both to the local company. And I think we need to consider that. I mean, if it's five or six hundred, I would not be saying this, but that close, I think we need to support our local businesses.
All right. Any further discussion?
I kind of agree with Charlie.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I do also.
Well, for me personally, I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but, uh, when you have the competitive bid process and two companies that have business, and I believe both companies were present at the opening.
World was.
One was.
World was, was present, but it's already been here.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm in it.
Mr. Chairman, do we not say we reserve the right to not accept the lowest bid?
You did.
My answer to your question.
Sure.
Been in construction, I, on these bids, even though you reserve the right to refuse the bids, uh, I know when government money's involved, it, you gotta have a pretty good reason. Yeah, am I thinking what you're thinking on this? I mean, I don't want to get in a squabble with anybody and end up in court over a hundred and fifty-five dollars. I'm all for, I'm all for keeping everything in account, but I'm also for making decisions that don't cost us all down the road. And we are talking about a hundred and fifty-five dollars. If it's a plain black and white thing, uh, that this company ain't gonna come back, but I know if we refuse low bid, we have to give some kind of reason.
And you can. I mean, you got a, you got an in-county company that pays in-county taxes, provides in-county jobs, so there is a disparity between the two. You could justify...
So you think it's sufficient? That's my question.
Is there a time limit on delivery of the vehicles difference?
They're both about the same.
About the same.
It's the same vehicle. And unfortunately, we didn't have anyone other than a Ford dealership submit a quote, whatever reason.
I agree with Charlie.
All right. Well, unless you do this, unless anyone else has any questions, our our first recommendation was to, um, the first pickup truck was from Worldwide Ford, uh, for the purchase of that one extended cab for the twenty-three eight ninety-one, uh, to be utilized by the Animal Control. So we're doing one motion at a time, but but that was a unanimous committee recommendation. So all those in favor of that one, please raise your right hand. Okay. And then the second recommendation, uh, was the, uh, the the bid was from Empire Ford for the purchase of the one regular cab pickup truck in the amount of twenty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty cents. Uh, that was a committee recommendation. So I guess, I mean, you'll correct me if if I'm wrong, but I believe we need to act on that committee recommendation first. Uh, so like I said, that was a committee recommendation, so all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? We have one and four, and then I will open up the further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we award the bid for this second truck to Worldwide Equipment with the bid that they have given us.
What bid is that? I don't see that bid. Is that what pays you off?
Worldwide bid on the regular cab pickup is twenty-two thousand one eighty-two, whereas opposed to Empire being twenty-one nine ninety-five forty.
Reclamation of Mr. Attucky for the single cab pickup truck at twenty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars from Worldwide Ford.
Yes.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? All right. Last thing on our agenda was, uh, Mr. Campbell presented an update concerning a request from Blue Ridge Discovery Center to receive a property tax waiver from Smith County. The, after review, Mr. Campbell stated that Blue Ridge Discovery would need to provide the county with a record, a record of the five oh one C three in order to qualify for a property tax waiver. And, uh, Mr. Carter was going to reach out to Blue Ridge Discovery, uh, for that information and update committee at a later time.
Mr. Chairman, just so you know, I have received that. We will have a budget committee meeting prior to your next October second meeting, so we can discuss that further.
All right.
And I will provide that to Mr. Campbell, too.
Anyone have any other questions? And that was the end of our our budget meeting. So now we will, uh, go to our Recovery Court presentation from Mr. Michelle Ward.
Michelle?
Yeah.
You're on.
I don't bother you. Uh, my name is Nick Brown. I'm a case manager with the Smith County Recovery Court, and I just wanted to come today and give an update on the program. I know Michelle was here at the beginning of the year to, um, talk about the program, what's involved in it, uh, what you have to do to qualify for it. Do you have some brochures to talk to her?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Thank you. So, we've heard a lot here tonight about, um, CSA, uh, foster care CPS, and with the proposal about the residential treatment. It's obvious how much substance abuse affects our area. And I've seen that, too. Um, I grew up in this area, and since college, I've worked in, um, so many different fields with families and kids, like presidential treatment, special treatment. I worked in CPS, uh, mental health, and it was always substance abuse. I mean, even, I totally agree, not long ago, I had to do photography part-time, Southeast. There's families that have done family picture report, and they've offered together, like, of substance abuse. So it really touches every area I've ever worked with. And, um, the one thing about Recovery Court that drew me to to come and work here is the way it's structured. It, um, with all my other positions, trying to help people who deal with substance abuse, it was always very frustrating, and I never, never dreamed I would end up back in this kind of position. But what was frustrating about it is, um, there was always something to prevent people from getting the help they needed. There wasn't either enough treatment, or it was, um, they couldn't access that treatment, or there was no, nothing to hold them accountable. It was offered to them, but actually getting them to do it was a different story. And we all know, when you're addicted to substances, your priorities are not in line with what they should be. So you can offer services, and, um, CPS and foster care workers work really hard to try to help families, but when your priorities aren't straight, even your children aren't what they should be as far as your priorities. So Recovery Court is a, is a mixture of of treatment, accountability, and compassion, and I think that's what makes this work. Um, we've got four phases, and the program takes about a year or two, year and a half to, for someone to complete it, and it's not easy. Uh, they go through every week, three, at least three random drug screens, uh, beginning the program, they do nine to twelve hours of treatment per week, and lots of supervision. They have curfews, um, curfew calls throughout the night. Uh, Smith County Sheriff's Department does random screens or random checks on them. Uh, Mount Rogers does the counseling, so it's, it's really a community effort that we just coordinated. But locally, um, it is working. And, and we, since the last time Michelle spoke with you all, we had, um, our first graduation, we had two graduates leave the program, and they had their graduation in September, which was just, uh, it was, um, they worked really hard for that, and it was really good to see the turnout there. We had over a hundred people come to support, and I think that just shows, um, how invested the community is in recovery. Uh, we had some senators there, our senator representatives from Mark Warner's office and Kim King's office, uh, Mr. Campbell was there, Sheriff Schuler, Todd Gilliam. Uh, one of our graduates had been, he started out doing community service at Goodwill, and they offered him a job there, and he's been doing well. So the CEO of Goodwill came to the, um, graduation and spoke with us after, just offering to help. He said he really wants to be involved in this program, so whatever they can do, reach out to him. So, so that was really good to see. Um, and a few of these people have been to your core graduations several times, and they commented to us that this was the best one that they've been to, this was the biggest turnout that they had seen, and I think that speaks to the community because we do, people didn't have to come to their graduation, they wanted to come to. So, so our big goal was just to to build on that, to get the community more involved. Um, is, um, we're having volunteer meeting this Friday, hoping to get some people involved in maybe doing some parenting classes, life skills, uh, job coaching, budgeting, things like that, because it, it really does take a community to overcome some of these things. Substance abuse is only part of the issue. Lots of the people in our program started youth at a very young age, and is given to them by family members lots of times. So, so in our program, the majority are in their twenties and thirties, so by the time they get to us, they've spent the majority of their lives on substance, and teaching them to live without that substance is kind of like raising them again in a way. Um, several of them don't know how budget, but never had a job. Um, currently, we have sixteen participants because we just had the two graduates. Out of the sixteen that are in our, in our program right now, eleven of those are working, which is awesome, and nine of those have full-time jobs. So, so they're working now, we're working on those things, and teaching them how to be responsible with their money, with the goal being, by the end of the program, they're going to be productive citizens and have a purpose, because that's a, that's a big part of it, is, um, getting them to realize that they're more than just the addiction that they have, they actually do have a purpose, and they can serve the community and serve other people. And that's, um, one thing we really stress, and we stress with our graduates, the two that we just had, they're gonna be coming back and being mentors to our, our newer people, or, um, being adopted, doing some, some support groups and things like that. And that's our hope for all of our graduates, is that we'll just build on that and continue to, um, we call it Pay It Forward, and we did, I don't know if anyone saw, but, um, back in May, we did a, a project, it was a community project called Pay It Forward Movement. Our participants had thirty bracelets that said Pay It Forward, and that month, they were supposed to, each day of the month, do something nice for someone in the community, give them a bracelet, and ask them to keep it going. So our hope was that that would start a movement and, and keep it going to reach thousands of people if it, if it continued going. So we've kind of built on that, and that's what we stress, is we want this to be a verbal effect. We want their struggle to be used for good, that can have other people that can help our community, and, and some of them want to help our community. They, we had one that actually commented that she feels like she has taken a lot from this community. Um, and, you know, some of them have led other people to do their own jobs, so they feel like they want things back to them, which is a good thing. And we can encourage and support that, and help them get the treatment that they need, and hold them accountable weekly and forward. All that combined is, is really making a difference. So I have a, a few statistics. Um, like I said, currently, we're serving sixteen in the program. We have one pending, who has been accepted into the program, but just hasn't, uh, begun yet. Of those seventeen, we have, um, sixteen kids enrolled. So even though we don't serve those kids directly, by serving their parents, we're hoping that makes a difference in that, too. We also, um, try to involve them through doing some family activities and, um, referring, helping the parent to further services as needed. Um, this year total, we've served twenty-five, and a total of thirty-eight kids, if you, if you look at the picture. Uh, since the program started, we've had two babies unborn, substance free, which is a, a huge thing for us. And like I told you, we have several that are working. They do community service weekly. Uh, we require that they do five hours, so on average, they're providing the community with eighty-five to ninety hours of work, and that's the way that they're giving back. But, um, it's also a savings to the county with our, um, if our, if we're at capacity of twenty-five, which, the way our program works, um, we're usually taking people and losing people at the same time, either through graduation, or it just doesn't work out, because it doesn't work for everyone. But, um, at capacity, looking at the jail costs, uh, it would save the county over the period of three years, which is what our grant is for, it would save the, the county one million one hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. So it's, it is a savings to the county, um, and it's a way for people to get treatment because sending them to jail and, and being released, it's just a cycle. They end up back in jail because they don't... They end up not in jail because they don't have the treatment. They get out of jail with a record, they have trouble getting housing, they have trouble affording a car because they can't get to work. It's just really set up for failure unless they get some of the resources they need. So. Any questions? I think I've covered everything else.
I mean, I'm sorry, go ahead. What's the total you've had enter into the program? I want to know, if we give the success end or the failure end, how many can you point that out?
So since the program started, um, we've had twenty-seven that we served. So that's actually been accepted into the program. And we've had the two graduates recently. So the others, um...
Has anybody started the program? You had to kick out, they had to go to jail?
Yeah.
That's the number I'm looking for.
Okay. We've had nine, two, seven, who have started the program.
So was that nine out of the twenty-five, or on top of the twenty-five?
That's nine out of the twenty-seven.
Nine out of the twenty-seven.
They have not, just not committed their substance. It does take commitment because it's not an easy program. Um, to change, you have to want to change, you have to move up to work. So we, we give them everything that we can, but it's ultimately up to them whether or not they, they want.
So the twenty-one you have into the program, not counting the two that graduated, or how many, how long have they been in the program?
Um, those of the ones that we currently have, we have seventeen, count the one that's pending. We have seven that are in phase one, which is the first phase we have. So those people have been in twelve weeks or less. We have six who are in phase two, which means um, they've been in twenty-fourths, or twelve and twenty-fourths. Uh, we have three in phase three, so they've been in the program longer than six months. And then we have one who's in phase four, close to graduation.
I know you hadn't been in long enough to, and I'll shut up there. I know you hadn't been in long enough to come up with this figure. But the ones that wasn't successful, did they fall out early, or did they make it to the second term, or have you seen anything that gives you any kind of...
Right. The ones that have not made it, no one has, um, none of them were quite the wrong in phase two. So most of the time when they don't make it in the program, they're still in phase one when that happens. And we, with our program, we understand that recovery is hard. Uh, what makes Recovery Court different than regular courts is we expect that there's, they're going to fail some drug screens. So we don't send them straight back to jail because they failed drug screens, that would be just like regular courts. So we address those, those instances with sanctions. So they'll get a consequence for their, but we can do that through additional, require them to do additional work. Or sometimes we will send them to jail for a few days as a sanction, especially if it's like deceit or manipulation or something like that, just to kind of be an eye of them, run on them. That's what could happen to them.
So how many, how many, how many tests do you allow them to fail before you kick them out?
It's really individualized. We have kind of a, an idea and guideline that we follow, but it's not said and saying because everyone's situation is very different.
I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Ackerman, did you have a question? I had the same one here. Oh, okay. Any, any other questions? We, we appreciate you coming by and giving you some presentation.
If you'd like to.
Thank you for all your work. All right. Next on the agenda, we have a VEC update. I have a miss meet. Would you like to...
Actually, um, my name is Kristy Lowe. I'm the new manager. Lisa is going to be today. Um, um, but I, I'm the new manager of Wiltfield Hallmark, and we recently took over serving the Smith County area. I have a packet I'd like to pass out, and some materials. Thank you all very much for having us today. We appreciate the opportunity. A couple of my cord out there. Let's speak with y'all. I just want to, first of all, there again, thank y'all for letting us come and give you that date. Y'all asked for some labor market information, and so I'll start with that, and then I'll move into talking a little about the local office and our operations there, if you're looking at it. So in your packet, y'all notice that there is a community profile for Smith County, and I'm just going to hit some of the highlights. But this is a profile that they put out on the Virginia Department Commission website and it's something regularly, and pretty much anything you want to know statistically about Smith County, you can go over there and get that information at any point in time that's readily available. Um, so what I'm going to start off with is unemployment rate. Uh, Virginia currently, the recent unemployment rate's at one percent in August, and it's currently in Virginia, the state, three point eight percent. The national unemployment rate currently is three point seven percent. Um, in, the peak unemployment rate in Virginia was back in February two thousand and ten, and at that point there were three hundred and seven, three hundred and seventy-five to five of sixteen employees definitely separated. There are now one hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three. So sometimes I make actual numbers, just to show you the difference between what it looked like at the peak, kind of gives you a better emphasis of the overall state unemployment. So currently, right now, there are one hundred and eighty-four, nine hundred and twenty-three individuals in Virginia that are currently separated and are not unemployed in the state of Virginia. In Smith County currently, there are five hundred and nineteen people currently on our unemployment roll. That's down from five hundred and fifty-three last year. So um, we did have a layoff recently here in the county, and that did impact our numbers. Last month, some of those individuals have went back to work, um, so no one affected them. The current unemployment rate for Smith County is currently three point nine percent. Last year at this time, the unemployment rate was four percent. Our current total labor force for this county is fourteen thousand and sixty-one, and um, out of that labor force, thirteen thousand, five hundred and forty-two are currently employed. That's the total state number. If you look at the overall numbers, most, most of our labor force is between the age of twenty-five and sixty-four. The majority of them, the, the ones that are laid off are in that age group, and they have a high school diploma or GED and some college education. The industries that those individuals were working in when they were separated was wholesale, healthcare administration, and manufacturing. Do you all have any um, questions about this general unemployment statistics? Right now, the average weekly wage for Smith County is six hundred and eighty-three dollars a week. I do have some additional profiles for some of the surrounding counties. It's a lot of paper and a lot of trees. So I did print a pocket for everyone, but I am going to leave these with you for your review. On the front of each one of these, I included information for those counties or surrounding counties which would be with Washington, Grayson, Tassau, and Long Island. Um, and I'll go over the information for Smith, but there's information here for the weekly average wage, whether the population for these areas is expected to increase or decline. Uh, it talks about your commuters. There is a net in commuter rate, basically it's telling you whether you have a negative impact or a positive impact, the number of people who live and work in the county versus the individuals who have to drive out of the area to work. And so um, it gives you that information. It tells you the industries they were separated from. It also gives you the um, area, the largest industries in that particular area. And I'll touch on some of those for Smith, but I wanted to let y'all know that we have, and you can pull this information up at any point in time off of the, the Labor Market Information website. But I think I'm going to give these to you so you have that information today. Just to give you an average of information, how it's useful, if you compare our weekly rate to Wiltfield County, we, the weekly average rate for Wiltfield County is six seventy-nine, for Washington County it's six ninety, for Grayson it's five forty-nine. So those are some just, if you wanted to see how we compare some of the other counties in the area, it'll give you that type of information as you're looking at that decision. Um, different ways to calculate.
Is it on a normal work week, a normal forty-hour work week, or what you base that on?
And they base it on all industries. You, when you go in there and look, they break it down per industry. So there's a chart in there that gives you this, all industries, but then it also breaks it down for retail, manufacturing, healthcare, weekly, the average rate, uh, weekly rate in each particular industry as well. Thank you. And as I said, they're available for you, print out the Labor Market Information website or VEC site, you can use it from that as well. And it just gives you a lot of information in rel, irrelevant to unemployment rate and what's going on in your particular community. Um, so I wanted to give that information out just as an overview first. As far as, excuse me, far as Smith County is concerned, right now the population overall within the next, between there and twenty-fourty is expected to decline. Um, we do have a negative community pattern, which means basically you have a negative number of people that are leaving the county to get a job versus those that are going in. So there's uh, two hundred and ninety-nine more individuals leaving than there are coming into the county, based on this statistics. Do y'all have any questions about those numbers?
No, I don't guess you have any idea. There's no way of knowing what they left to do, to do, what kind of work?
Um, the chart gives you a little bit of information, um, but a lot of it has to do with, if you look at the type of work of individuals seeking, it may or may not be available in that county.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
And it's broken down by single percentages with the chart, but it doesn't give you an exact figure. The thing that we leave in rural communities, we have found that there are common job types, IT being one of those, for instance. Um, there may not be a large number of IT jobs in this particular county, but the neighboring government may have an employer that hires a lot of individuals in that particular area. Um, and they will have to commute to go to work the jobs they're looking for. Whereas you may have more manufacturing, if you, the people that are coming into the county, you may have a lot of people that are coming in for agricultural manufacturing or very other, very other businesses. So you do have a lot of people drowning here to come to work. You know, a lot of people coming from Wiltfield County and some surrounding areas to come to this area to work. There's just a deficit of two hundred and ninety-nine people who actually are leaving above those that are coming in.
Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Because I'm, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm trying to track with you, but...
Okay, I'm sorry.
There's a whole lot that I'm missing. So in comparison to our neighboring counties, if we're at two ninety-nine, what, what are we saying to...
Back in that, I wrote it on the front of each of those. In comparison to the other counties, um, West, Wiltfield County has a, a negative, theirs is much higher. There's a seven hundred and seventy-six people who are leaving their county versus those that are coming. If you look at Washington County, theirs, theirs is possible, nine hundred and three more individuals drive into that county than actually leave to go to work. You have, um, Grayson, three thousand, eight hundred and fifty people. That's a negative number, leave that county to work in other counties, other surrounding localities. So two hundred and ninety-nine, that's a really low number.
Yeah, what I was getting at is it's a, it's a regional, and we have a regional problem with the, except for Washington.
Well, and Washington County is also a full, each of its own destiny, comes from Virginia, so your number's not Virginia alone. But if you look at the numbers overall, Smith County is an American place compared to some other areas who are losing industries in much larger numbers, and people are actually transversing to other areas much more than they are here. Your numbers as far as your population were nursing, they were not, you know, you're not, you're expected to have declined. Right now, as far as your workforce group is very strong. It's not, but if you look at some counties, if you look at the age, the younger age group, the numbers are much lower than this county. So you are retaining, and you have to actually look, if you look at your statistics, you have a large group between the age of fifteen and nineteen that are getting ready to graduate. You have the workforce, are going to college, that are, you know, right now, they're in the area. So if your, that number's lowers, that's a good thing, because a lot of counties, you know, that number goes down very quickly as soon as they graduate from high school. So those are all positives. I think there's a lot of industry in that area, and there's a lot of variety in the industries in there that you keep, keep in your county. You have more variety in your unemployment base than some of the surrounding counties if you go and look at your charts and that. If you go to the page by page, which we can do if you want to, um, because if you look at that particular breakdown of the industries, you have variety in the area, so it's not all in one area. You do have a lot of employment in manufacturing, but even that manufacturing is somewhat diverse. It's not like everything's, uh, for instance, in Kielaski County, everything, a large portion of it is connected to one industry, automotive. So once, one thing happens, it kind of trickles down to everything else.
You got to look too, at Worthing County, having a positive, you got to look how much bigger they are than Smith County.
Right. And if you look at the, they're different in their demographics as far as they order to see, they have a larger retail base, they have, because they have a lot more malls and stores and restaurants and various things in that, more metropolitan base of Bristol. So it's, you can't, it's not apples to apples in comparison. But that's a really small number to have. You know, if you look at Montgomery County, um, you know, even though it's a large area, they still have a lot of people living in that area, it's one of the other areas to work. Same thing with Kielaski County. So, does that help?
Yes, yes. Commander, thank you.
Is there any other information you want? I just want to go over a general review of the services at the office and what we do here and what we're looking for in the future. So I started with the Virginia, I can't vote. I came back to the Virginia Unemployment Commission in October of this past year. I actually worked for the Virginia Unemployment Commission in the past for twelve years. I left and went to Virginia Tech, I worked in the American Department, which is department for thirteen years, and then I came back, like I said, this past October. Um, this is where my heart has always been, is with the Virginia Unemployment Commission, and with helping individuals look for work in the community and helping employers find employees, something that I've always enjoyed doing, something that I'll take with me. If you ever had a job, your heart is completely invested in that. That's where mine has always been. Um, so I was glad to come back and give you the opportunity. Uh, so I want to give you a little background. Um, I actually worked for Lisa in the past, and that's what she was with a job for. Lisa, she does an awesome job. She has, um, served this office and this community for a long period of time, and with the Virginia Unemployment Commission for a long period of time. And, um, I bet she does an excellent job. We want to appreciate, we want to thank you, or to thank for the opportunity to still come through, that you're providing us with space to come here and serve the citizens of this community. We want to continue to do that. My goal is to continue to build on what we're currently doing. Uh, we did recently have a geographic realignment within the VEC. This office here in Smith was originally covered under the Bristol office. And they made the decision earlier this year to re, to look at the areas and change that a little bit. We re, our office in Wiltfield previously, previously served a portion of Kielaski County. So they decided to change that, and now the portion of Kielaski County actually been served by the Radford Office, which is now actually located in Kielaski County. And we picked up Smith County under the Wiltfield Office coverage. So with that, it doesn't fall under Bristol Office anymore, falls under the Wiltfield Office, that's to change the compliance. The office is still primarily staffed by, Lisa, she comes up on, um, and that's another thing. We did recently change our, our days of operation. Um, the days of operation were originally Monday and Wednesday. We just recently changed those to Tuesday and Thursday. The hours will remain the same, from eight AM, I'm sorry, eight thirty AM to three PM. Um, we made that change so that we can have a little more flexibility with staffing as well as professional development for our staff, um, but feel like we can serve the citizens of the county on those days as well as we do on Monday and Wednesday. We need to put a public notice in the paper to, last Saturday, last Saturday, to let people know. And we do plan on putting an article together and putting in a level of paper so that people will be more aware of our date change and that our services that we have. So we do plan to do that. Our date change was a date of October the first. Um, and we also provide services on Friday by appointment for our reemployment, uh, our RASDA program, our reemployment services, which is an intensive... our reemployment services, which is an intensive reemployment services program. Uh, in your packet, if you'll look, um, I provided a brochure that goes over all the services that we offer through the Virginia Employment Commission. It talks about unemployment, job service, which includes our employee services for our employers there, writing job orders, offering job fairs, labor market information, new I tax assistance if it's needed. Um, we did offer five job fairs in our local, in this building, uh, this past year. And we hope to do more of that. We did, I did have a conversation with Mr. Carter earlier, and we talked about that a little bit, as far as what we might do as far as regular scheduling space, offer more job fairs so we can encourage employers to come into the building and set up interviews and talk with individuals. Um, we, C F G R W recently laid off. Uh, we worked with a lot of our partners in Smith County. We put together a new family, we put together a job fair for those individuals within a two and a half week time period. We were able to bring in 13 employers to a local church. It was wonderful enough to donate the space and allow us to use that for that purpose. We had 13 employers, and we ended up having 77 people at 10. It was well received. Um, we don't have a total number of hires on that, but we have heard from several employers, and they have hired individuals from that particular area. So we were happy to be able to do that and be here in the community and try to assist those individuals go back to work as quickly as possible. And those are the types of things we want to continue to do. We want to partner with the county, we want to partner with the local resources. You know, we want to do everything we can with each of the counties that we work with to serve the residents in that area. Um, so that's, that's our goal, um, is to try to do those types of things. We're in conversation with a local program called C Set, which works with seniors. Um, and we're hoping to be able to have one of their staff work in our office as well. Uh, right now, our ceiling is two offices, and, um, there's a wall in there. So when we're serving a person in one office, there's other people in the resource room next door, and we don't, if this person is working with them, there's nobody over there to serve that person. So, um, we're hoping to get an additional assistance from our partners to provide more service in that area, or possibly a, a bigger room at some point, maybe where everything can be in one room. But for right now, the county's new gracious enough that provides an extra building, uh, makes it feel extra ready, that we have a veterans representative that comes in, uh, on Fridays as well by appointment, and assists the veterans in our communities, and, uh, they're allowed to use an additional space for that, so we appreciate that as well. And our goal, as I said, is to continue to provide those services and improve them and to collaborate and partner as much as we can to provide assistance to individuals in this county. Do you think I missed? Oh, yeah, I forgot about that. In your packet, we have, um, a chart that shows you the numbers of people that we serve. Just in the last quarter here in the local office, um, between July 6th and October 5th, the married household was 166 people. And you have to realize, this is two days a week, typically one person. That's a lot of people in quarter for two days a week in one person. We also offer the reemployment services eligibility assessment program. I'm gonna stop for just a minute and let Lisa give you a five-minute spiel or two minutes spiel on that program, if she doesn't mind, just to kind of tell you what it does for the individuals, and it's a great program. And then, of course, she'll tell you about job, uh, Blue Ridge Job Corps, how she serves them as well. So, um, I am a worker for the reemployment and eligibility assessment program that's under our department. We have the grant for that. So when individuals sign up for unemployment, as we know, we have individuals from the manufacturing and different other areas that come in, and they may not have employability skills. So what I do is, um, I schedule my time to come here, and usually on Friday, but here recently, I've been doing three days a week here, um, meeting the needs of V F T R W and things like that. So what we do is we make sure that they have, um, complete registration for job service. And I sit down and I do an assessment with them. I audit their unemployment to make sure that they are meeting all the requirements for that as well. Once we do that, we make sure that they do have a resume that's marketable of the skills that they have. And I help sure, make sure that they know that they're looking for suitable work within their marketable skills. So they do have a follow-up appointment, but one of the major things is that I want to teach them employability skills, okay? So from cover letters to resumes, to mock interviews if they are needed that, um, to thank you letters, um, how to use the internet, how to set up an email address. Uh, you'd be really surprised at how many people do lack computer skills. Um, I do referral up to the summit, um, because Lithgow Community College does offer some free basic computer skill classes up there, so, um, I make sure they get referral sources. We do have, um, Z F T R W that do qualify under the Trade Act, so some of these individuals are interested in returning back to maybe for a certification, associate's degree of some kind of training, whether it be for staffable skills or to go into some other different kind of skill. We have a lot of individuals coming out of the manufacturing environment, which we know does a lot of wear and tear on your physical body, that have determined that they don't want to return into that environment. So, um, we help them do some assessments online to maybe find out where they would be best suited. Then we do some referral sources over to people incorporated, and the general local community college offers what they need, and sometimes closest to where their residential, um, place of living is. So we do that. They do come into a second, um, follow-up appointment with me. Um, during that time, I just want to make sure that they have been getting online, uh, using the Virginia Workforce Connection website, make sure that they fully understand how they do that, and hopefully that they have followed up with the referrals that I have provided those. So as of this year, well, within this quarter, um, since July, I have serviced 47 individuals. This is intensive case management, and this is intensive services. So, um, usually when they come in, they spend the first four hours with me. And I have them doing hands-on, it's just not me just talking to them, but it's actually hands-on. I want them to know what they're doing and how to use what I'm trying to supply them with. Also, um, everyone's curated with the Blue Ridge Job Course Center here. So when they have new students who come in as well, um, what they do is they bring the students up here. They were coming up on Wednesdays now, they will be coming up on Tuesdays, the new students. And what I do is I provide them an orientation to the Virginia Employment Commission and our job service website, which is the Virginia Workforce Connection. I usually give about a 30-minute orientation to them, go over labor market according to the majors that they're going into, which is all medical at the Blue Ridge, um, Job Course Center. So just sort of try to help them maybe make a decision that they want to advance themselves other than a C N A or a C M A, which is a, a medical assistant, so. But, um, we have really been busy here lately. Um, I'm working with an awesome, unique team out in Lithgow. Um, they're very proactive, and I'm blessed to have a manager because she has vision. So, um, we're hoping to grow here in Smith County and be able to continue to serve. So we do thank you all for the space, Mr. Carter, Kelly, and everybody for everything that you all was doing for. Do y'all have any questions?
Anyone have any questions? As I say, I mean, your, your website and the update on your statistics is, is excellent. You know, we use that in the school system a lot, in business classes, in our C P courses. Uh, when you go through your packet, you know, when you get over to page 23, where it talks about the employers, the largest employers in Smith County and that breakdown, uh, that's something that we even use for statistics for, uh, grants and, and things that we have to apply for from the department that's here.
And a lot of people know this, but if you need data that's not in the chart, then, you know, there is a department you can reach out to at V E C and ask for something that's not available. Sometimes they can pull different data. So if, you know, if you don't, can't find the request on there, or there is a place to request that, then you can let me know and I can help you. But there are many counties where you might need a specific set of data that's not available, and sometimes we can help. One thing Lisa didn't mention with the R O S E A program is, these individuals are, basically everybody that files for unemployment is put through basically a formula that determines the likelihood that they're going to disclose their unemployment before they go back to work. And that's the individuals that actually are selected for the R O S E A program. Um, so it is important that we spend extra time and intensive service for those individuals, because we want to make sure that that does not happen. We want to try to help them find a job for that if it's exhausted, so. Um, but, you know, from the employer side, we are also trying to be very active in the community. Lisa has a strong relationship with our employees in the area. We want to continue to strengthen that, and our cards make every, every search we have available to every person.
All right, well, thank you very much, we appreciate everything I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Yes, we've been going strong. Uh, if, if you'll bear with us, we're gonna take a five-minute break. All right. We'll call the meeting back to order. Uh, next on the agenda, we'll finish up our committee recommendations with the Water and Service Committee. Mr. Carter.
I thought we'd meet in order at 3:31. We have a couple that tend to meet, very nice people. He's the fellow, and her husband. A resident who lives on Jordan Lane in Marion spoke to the committee concerning an issue with the road, which is a private road. She stated that the county installed a sewer line there more than 10 years ago, and never fixed the road. Over time, the road has suffered, wired due to improper drainage, and the postal service has communicated to the residents that the mail will no longer be delivered due to the condition of the road. She then went on to say that, that she would like for the county to address the issue and fix Jordan Lane. Discussion continued with Ms. Cullip and the committee. Mr. Phil Stevenson stated that Smith County was not responsible for road maintenance, and it would be difficult to address since the project was installed more than 10 years ago. He then encouraged Ms. Cullip to contact other property owners on Jordan Lane, and everyone pooled their resources to fix the road. He then made a motion to deny the request being made by Ms. Cullip. Mr. Ray seconded the motion, and all agreed unanimously. It was a committee recommendation.
All right, so that was a committee recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
Next issue, Mr. Cardy, Carter. County administrative review, Smith County water and sewer schedule fees. Mr. Carter stated that due to some recent complaints received by customers, staff had reviewed the fee schedule and would like for the committee to further discuss the reimbursement establishment fee of $225 and $850 as described on the schedule. Uh, Mr. Stevenson made a motion to recommend temporary suspending the two charges until further discussion by the committee. And Mr. Ray seconded the motion, all agreed it was another committee recommendation, sir.
All right, so we have a committee recommendation, if you have any further, yes.
Clarification on what we mean by suspend the two charges. It sounds pretty cut and dried, but what do we mean by suspend the two charges?
May I answer that?
That meeting, that water meeting where the people asked us to work on the road, went on for a long, long time, and we had a building to ground committee after that. That, those two items are, this, it was our feeling or my feeling, and that they deserved some discussion on how they've been applied, and we did not have time to go over those issues, so we have suspended them till a later meet.
Oh, you're not suspending charges, you just moved it to a later meeting?
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
Till we get more time to talk about that.
So you're taking a little other words, that's correct.
Okay. All right, any further questions?
Is that good enough, Mr. Carter, or? Now, some of the, a couple of those charges are, I don't know. We did suspend the charges till we could discuss them, is that, is that not true, or am I wrong?
There was, there was one in particular that I recall that, that resulted from a, a meter set that was still there, but a new owner had purchased the property.
Yeah.
And there was a re-establishment fee, um, that was in question because of the metering device still being in the box. It was not physically separated from the, from the box. So there was a discussion about temporary, and it's my understanding that this, um, individual is not in a hurry. I think Lisa spoke with the individual, and they are awaiting us to formally take that back up under consideration.
Those fees are something that are, can be debatable, and they need some time to be talked about and looked into.
So really what we're doing right now is nothing, we're just moving to the next meeting. Yeah, it was just an update. Just an update.
The continuation will occur to the next meeting to determine the actual charges applied.
Okay. All right, um, so do we, we, yes. So that was a committee recommendation.
Got you.
Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna not vote, because I don't know what we're voting on. The word of suspend.
So we have one abstain, abstention, okay.
Last issue, Mr. Carter then presented a request by the family of Ray Thompson to reimburse the $50 disconnect reconnect fee that was recently applied to his account. Mr. Thompson is terminally ill, terminally ill and not able to pay. After discussion, Mr. Stevenson made a motion to apply the $50 back to Mr. Thompson's account. Mr. Ray seconded the motion, and all agreed unanimously. And Mr. Chairman, at, at this time, he has passed away. He's a hard-working young man, and will be missed in the community.
I hate to hear that. Uh, that, that was a committee recommendation.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
That being nothing else to come before the committee, I adjourned at 4:25. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Who has the animal damage trailer? Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Chairman, I, I don't recall, but I think when the discussion went on about it being only one claim, that the preference, and I think, Mr. Atkins, I think you're the chairman, but, um, I think the preference was just to bring it to the board in, in order to eliminate having an additional meeting just to address one claim. Is that a fair statement?
Yes. Okay.
So I don't mind if identified.
If you would like to do that.
We purposely provided the photos in black and white, so that there's not a, a lot of detail goes along with it. But basically, we had one claim from, uh, Mr. Tim Spencer over on Bluegrass Trail section of the county. He had two lambs that were destroyed by dogs. Uh, they were estimated to be at $150 each. Uh, we had animal control to go out, they identified that, that indeed there were multiple bites to the head, neck, and flanks. They confirmed the damage was done by dogs. The extension office, which provides, um, the county with an accurate value of, of these animals, uh, indicated that those animals were valued at $135 each, coming to a total of $270. And it is certified that the above claims have been investigated and approved, recommending $270 to be paid in settlement for the damage, uh, to Mr. Spencer. And with that being a committee recommendation, that is before the board for consideration.
I make a motion to approve.
I'm second. All right, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. If you'll slide back to your additional agenda, and we'll go to number three, requests to advertise Back of the Dragon project. And Ms. Kelly, what?
Okay, you guys have a letter that was written to request to advertise the project. But I'm just gonna back up a little bit to tell you, um, we have a little timeline of where we're at with the Back of the Dragon project. Um, beginning of September, we received the right-of-way certification, um, that was given to us by B Dot. I sent that information on to the engineer, which is hurt and coughed it. Um, we received their documents back on September 11th. I then forwarded all that information on to B Dot. And if you're familiar at all with these types of projects, there's several steps that you have to go through. with the engineer, and then VDOT gets this. They have to go through civil rights. That has to be approved. That's still in civil rights right now. Once civil rights approves this, it has to go to VDOT's central office. We have received environmental reports for the project. VDOT has reviewed those, and they have sent that back to me. There's three things that they want fixed. There's a couple species of bats that need to be addressed, and then the law legals need to come off, so that has to be fixed. I've contacted Horton Coffee for the updated environmental report, so hopefully I will get that in the next week or so. The Back of the Dragon Commission was sent a letter to request the grant extension. As you know, the program's funding for that project. I actually will be attending a meeting tomorrow where they will consider that request. So I have spoken to them several times, and they don't feel like it's an issue to extend the grant with them. I have also spoken to VDOT concerning the fund that they have on the project. They have not expressed any need to request any type of extension for their funding, as long as we are in construction in spring of next year, so they feel okay with the project. So the letter you guys have before you is to put with my package of information that has to go to VDOT in order to give the project out.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? It's the pleasure of the board. So we need a, we need to propose a motion to approve the advertisement.
To request VDOT, yes. And like I said, it'll govern this package of information that has to be given to VDOT. It's not being advertised right now. There's still several steps to have it actually advertised.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? All right, thank you very much. Next, we have our animal shelter inspection update. Ms. Richardson?
On page 14 of your additional agenda, there was annual inspection made by the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services at the Smith County Animal Shelter. That was an unannounced inspection on August 20, 2019. And as you noticed there, the facility did pass with no significant filings of non- compliance.
That is excellent news. Please commend the workers for all their hard work.
Do we have, may I have a question?
Yes, absolutely.
Has our new chief got his, can he perform his task like Bill Miller? He is pastime. We're good to go?
We're good to go.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? To finish up the additional agenda, we have Youth Government Day notification. Richardson?
On the page 14 of your additional agenda, we notified that Tuesday, October 22, 2019, is Student Government Day. The students will be picked up at 9:45 a.m., and I've already brought to different county locations, including here, the Morrisville and Boxian. And we just ask if there's any participation in that, if there's anyone that wants to be part of that on that day.
It's a big day for our seniors. They really enjoy getting to participate and do some job shadowing about all our departments. So if you're free and want to participate, be sure and let, we'll let anyone know. All right, so that finishes up the additional agenda. We are now down to our last item. I haven't skipped anything, Anna. Okay, excellent. Discussion concerning our recent resignation of Chi-A District Board of Supervisors representative. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Carter for some information.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you are aware at this time, over the last week or so, there has been a decision made by the former Chilhali district elected Board of Supervisor member initially to plan a resignation from the Board of Supervisors. And I received word, as I communicated with each of you, that additional notification simply says, please make my resignation effective 9/30/2019. So as of 9/30/2019, that resignation has been communicated. And speaking with Mr. Campbell, it's my understanding that the first order of business would be for the Board of Supervisors to officially accept that resignation. Is that correct, Mr. Campbell?
I guess maybe we need to talk about the whole process here. First of all, what will you do with respect to the resignation? How you will feel that position pending, I would presume, the petition of the circuit court for a writ of special election? The code gives this body the ability to be able to make an interim appointment until that special election is conducted, whenever that may be scheduled. The code also provides that interim appointment must be made within 45 days of the occurrence of the vacancy. So the question is, is when does this vacancy occur? Does it occur when Mr. Ray submits his resignation letter, or does it occur when, in fact, this body accepts that letter? So I guess ultimately, the decision of whether and when the timing of the acceptance of a letter would be had is conditioned upon what your all's plans are, obviously, in the future with respect to an interim appointment.
So I guess the first question for the board is, do we have a motion? I want your thoughts on officially accepting the resignation that has been presented.
Right, speak.
Yes.
Man clearly wanted to resign. For whatever reasons, I had some respect for the guy. I respect the way, I even respect his resignation. But he has resigned. We have a paper. So I think it's up to us to accept his resignation and move forward. I think that's our duty to the county, so if we need that motion, I'm prepared to make it.
All right, so we have a motion to accept the resignation.
Sure.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. So I guess.
I think it's clear now that the resignation effective date would be September 30, as much as you've accepted it conditioned upon it set by Mr. Ray. So I think you've got 45 days from that date to make an interim appointment.
All right, so.
Or until November 14.
Would it be too premature to discuss when the next scheduled election would be?
I may be able to provide some insight on that, as included. I spent some time with Sandy Allo, because her general registrar, and we discussed this matter in detail. Couple of the last pages of your agenda identify code sections, which I'll entirely leave up to Mr. Campbell. That's his name. The very last section, the very last page, 34, is the election schedule for 2020. And in discussion with Ms. Elswick in review of these existing, you say, a March 3, a May 5, a June 9, and a November 3, identified on page 34, it was the conclusion that the May 5 election, which is the town elections, would probably be the best and most efficient way to utilize as an election for this vacated seat. So that would be for the board's consideration to identify that. But again, in communication with the registrar, and I tend to agree that of the available choices, that seems to be the most logical.
And those town elections would be for the, you might, for example, the town of Chilhali Council, town council, would be up for election on that date?
Yes.
24.2-682 says that no special election shall be held within 55 days prior to a general or primary election. Now, there is that conceivable possibility we could have a presidential primary next year, and which would be conducted in.
June. And again, she only indicates scheduled, not planned, so that was the choices that were made about it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, I talked to Sandy just a few minutes before we had this meeting started tonight. She said she hadn't had a chance to talk to Michael, but that after realizing that, she saw our dates would have to be a special election between June and September 11th or something like that. But I think we don't have to decide that today. We can just firm up those dates and get back at our next meeting.
Yeah, I'm assuming that would just be the general discussion that that would be our intent to work out that date that meets all the codes.
And thank you, because I
I was hoping.
I was going to watch you.
That's what she said. She said y'all discussed it, and she'd come up with some new information and wanted me to convey that to y'all.
All right, so we've accepted the resignation. We know that we can hold an election at the appropriate time that meets all those guidelines. So I guess the next point of discussion would be the pleasure of the board to discuss maybe a interim replacement, or feel free to jump in and help me till we get to that election date.
Mr. Chairman, I'm here ready to propose a interim supervisor from Chilhali. And he comes with, as Curtis was a Democratic candidate for that position, I have a letter here from the Democratic Party endorsing William Bill Levens for that seat. Pass this down. Mr. Levens has served on this board before. He actually represented the Chilhali district. He has been the president of the VACO organization. Comes with a lot of experience. He used to serve quite a few years, really, on the board, and just decided it was time to retire. He didn't get voted out or anything. And I think we should call his expertise to come in and hit the ground running, so to speak, for the four to five months we might need somebody. And he comes with the Democratic Party's recommendation.
So I have a recommendation? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second?
So, do I have a question?
Yes.
So do we go on one at a time? I know there's more than one involved.
I would think we would take all, you know, in all recommendations, and then it's kind of like when you vote for the chairman, you take all the recommendations, then you vote in order of recommendation and make your determination.
I'd like to make a recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I see you run against Mr. Ray and received quite a few votes. In that election, Mr. Wade Levens.
Okay. So we have a recommendation for also a previous member, Mr. Wade Levens. Do I have a second for that recommendation?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
He has a second, but with that second, I'd like to call him in.
Okay.
I know these two individuals, they're both real good individuals. I've known Bill Levens for a long time. He's a good man. I second Wade because it's not been long since he's been gone. He's current. And he was involved in the election. He did run for office. So that is reason I have given him a second.
All right. Do I hear any additional recommendations? Which I think would be hard, since we have four and I can't make one. All right, well, here then, I'll close the recommendations. I'm assuming we do them in the order that they were presented, or?
That is how, at least, the chairman's role has been presented.
Well, let's just follow that order, because that's a good precedent. And so, and we have, the first recommendation was for Mr. William Bill Levens. We have a second for that recommendation. Is there any further discussion on the first Mr. Levens? All right, all those in favor of that recommendation, please raise your right hand. And two, opposed. And three, so that recommendation would fail. And I guess we would go to the second recommendation, Mr. Wade Levens. We had that recommendation in a second. Is there any further discussion on that recommendation?
Yes, I'd like to point out that when Wade lost the election, he never showed back up for another meeting, another committee meeting. He basically quit, and now he's wanting to step back in. I just think it's, he gave a wrong impression going out the door. And for us to bring him back with that attitude, I think that's wrong.
All right, is there any other comments or questions? All right, here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just for the record, I would like to also make note that Mr. Levens did lose the election. He obviously was not the choice of the people of Chilhali. And Mr. Levens that we nominated the first time did serve with honor. He has excellent credentials. And I think that it just has a bitter appearance to have somebody that's totally not associated with any past things much recently to take that position. So those are my feelings about it.
All right. Go right ahead.
I understand what you're saying. I got all the respect for the world from that setting everybody. But to say that Mr. Wade Levens wasn't involved in this county, he sat on this board for 16 years. During that time, and Mr. Carter, you correct me here, he was a very conservative representative. I think during that time, there was even a tax reduction. And correct me if I'm wrong. And I don't know, was there ever a tax increase in that 16 years?
Yes, sometime in that six.
But there was a reduction.
There was a reduction.
I've noted a man to be very conservative, very involved. He is the latest one that sat on the board that showed interest. And this is a tough vote for me, but I ain't voting because I think it's, he comes in hitting the ground running because he hadn't been going that long, so with that, I'll shut up.
All right. Any other discussion? So we have a recommendation for Mr. Wade Levens to fill as the interim person until the election. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carries. I guess we'll take care of the notifications. Yes, go ahead.
May I ask, Mr. Campbell? What now is the legal process regarding your writ of election and all of that?
The board will have to authorize me to petition the circuit court judge for the issuance of a writ of election on a date when we can coordinate as compliant with the code.
So that can be done at a later board meeting date?
I'd submit it to you, probably ought to be done tonight, since you've already taken action on this, so that we can get started on it.
So that would be a motion to petition with a date, once the date is determined?
A motion to petition the circuit court judge for the issuance of a writ of election. That's enough. The dates can be determined.
All right, Wade.
That's for specifically a writ of election. That's all we're doing.
Writ of election.
Okay. So it's the pleasure of the board.
Well.
We have a third recommendation.
I'll second. We gotta have the election. I mean, it's up to the people. We're just temporarily appointing somebody, so.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous? So that'll move that process along. Is there anything else with this process that we need to address tonight?
I will. It's not on the agenda, but you do have a second, maybe. Virtue of the action taken in my eye, I will contact Wade Levens to have him take the proper oath to be able to participate. I assume that you want him at your next board meeting as the representative of the Chilhali district?
That would be mine, too.
That's the way you vote, like, you know?
I will take the appropriate measures to have that. I will, I will take the appropriate measures to have that taken care of.
Okay. So we have a continued meeting on October the twenty-fourth. At what time?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Late commission.
So I'm not supposed to close the meeting? I just continue. Right, excellent. So if I haven't skipped anything on the agenda, we'll go to.
You can do that.
Superintendent time, in fact. Slide on down.
I think I've said enough for tonight.
Go ahead. No comment.
I'd like to just bring the board up on, a little bit on the salvage rescue squad. Had a member supposed to be here tonight and he ended up in the hospital and couldn't make it. But last month, he actually come out with a surplus of, right around eight thousand dollars, which is great. They've made all types of changes to the organization and it seems to be working. The cause is running better. They have enough at this time to last another five to six months and everything is looking up more every time. And I really want to comment on those people, on that squad, because they have really stepped up and took the ball running and hit the ground running. Did a great job.
Are you done, Ross? I, I just want to add your comment. This is a situation where we needed their services and when we need them, you see how important they are. I want to thank them and we, I'm glad they're doing good, but you know, that's something we really need support. We gotta have them.
I'm very proud of them. I'm on the board, the directors, I'm never making, I tell them the same thing, and I'm very proud of them.
Yeah.
You never know when it's going to be you needing to look up at one of them.
And when it is, it's your life. It's very, very important. So I'm glad they're doing good and they got my support.
I'll relay that to them. Thank you.
All right, I think you can relay that from everybody. You know, we appreciate all, everything they do throughout my whole county. I would like to, to thank y'all for your patience. I hope I didn't miss anything up. Mr. Disher, I apologize for not being here. His job is taking him out of town, his new job, but he will be back on the twenty-fourth. I would like to thank Mr. Bill Blevins for, for coming and being willing to throw your name in the hat to, to serve. It's very difficult and it seems to be getting more difficult to find people who are willing to participate. There's a lot of positives to it, but also unfortunately, there, there are some negatives to come along with it. And so I appreciate anybody who has the willingness to serve. And on a personal note, you know, when you have a choice between a Blevins or a Blevins, somebody, you know, I can do it. It's just my personal point, but we will continue the meeting till the twenty-fourth. You're going to drive safely and we will.